Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, May twentieth, twenty twenty-five, and this is the continuation of the suspended meeting for Monday, May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. We won't have a roll call, but just so it's in our minutes, Chris Powell, Audrey Wetzel, Bree Gregg, Tony Cunningham, Doug Stoneball, Kevin Andrews, and Sue Clark is all present. Oliver Getmore, who was absent last night, is still absent today. We finished one through seven, and we will continue on item number eight, which is our new business, Item A, and that's a Zoom meeting to discuss concerns about adding new sewer taps through Valley View, and this is the veteran land buyers of Florida, and that is our Zoom that you're looking at off to the corner. Ms. Olrich?
Larry, you walking up? Down, listen, you hear me all right?
I can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
I can't hear you.
Give us just a second for picking. Hey, y'all keep on talking. I'm trying to figure out where this, where your voice is coming out.
Let me know.
Yeah.
Yeah, can you hear me? Maybe I can give you a thumbs up if they can hear.
That's good.
All right, how about me? How about me, if they can hear me?
Yeah, here he is.
All right, beautiful. Well, first of all, I just wanted to say thank you very much to the mayor and Larry Olrich, and of course, the city council for making these special accommodations to allow us to join via Zoom. And this really does mean so much to us. And so before we start to present this project, I just wanted to take a couple of minutes, and I just wanted to introduce us so that way you guys know who we're working with here. So on behalf of Nick and the entire Veteran Land Bieters team, my name is JP Kilda. I'm a retired military veteran. I served in the United States Coast Guard for about twenty years. I actually got my start right here in Arkansas. I was, my first station out of boot camp was in Pine Grove. You might be asking yourself, what the heck is the Coast Guard doing in Pine Grove, Arkansas? Which is what everybody who ever talked to has asked. And there's actually, we do aid to navigation. We mark the channel on the Arkansas and the Mississippi River. So that was, that was a fun job. So Nick was in the Navy for eight years before going over to the Air National Guard, and then transitioning into military contracting, where he served his time over in Iraq. Between the two of us, we both hung up, we retired, and probably around twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, and we retired to Florida, where we currently live, which is tornado free, which we absolutely are grateful for. And so over the last, I would say, several years between Nick and I, we have about fifteen years of combined real estate investing experience. And over the last several years, we have focused specifically on land and in the great state of Arkansas. So this is what Nick and I do day in and day out. We have a team of eight people, and our mission is to take one person's unwanted land and turn it into another person's field of dreams. And we've done that several times over all throughout the state. We've done projects from Benton all the way over to Green County and as far south as Columbia. So we've been all over the state of Arkansas, and now we quite literally have an opportunity here to take the Valley View Golf Course, one person's unwanted land, and turn it into another person's field of dreams. So we're absolutely excited for the opportunity here. And before I hand it over to Mr. David Hanson, I just want to introduce him real quick. So we met David about two and a half years ago. Nick met him, and then I got introduced to him about two and a half years ago. And it's no wonder we hit it off. His father was actually a Master Chief in the Navy, so I think that there's something to do there with all the military ties. But David has actually been doing civil engineering since almost before I was born, and he lives in Chicken. So he's got a lot of experience doing civil engineering. He's been with several large firms and national builders, and he actually has his hands in several projects all over the southeast, a couple, you know, in Augusta, Georgia, Alabama, South Carolina. And then hopefully with, with everybody's grace here tonight, he can introduce them here into our Arkansas. So without further ado, I'd like to get to hand off the mic to Mr. David Hanson, and he's going to press into our project. Thank you for the part two words, Jay. Yeah, I appreciate it. I'll be here. Actually, can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Awesome. Well, listen, I want to, I want to echo Jay's words and thank you all for accommodating us this evening. And I trust that everyone in your community was safe after the storms last night, and that you all got, apparently must have gotten them safely, and were able to get back in to this meeting again this evening.
They went over the top of us.
Oh, very good. Well, hey, you know, can't afford the storm. So anyway, Jay, it was a great, it gave you a great introduction. I am a civil engineer and a land planner. I started work, I spent most of my career outside Washington DC, in Northern Virginia, and, and Metropolitan Maryland. I started in nineteen eighty-eight, so I have been doing it quite a while. I, I got out of corporate in two thousand and four, and I've been doing landfill development and ownership representation work since then. The project before you guys this evening, and I hope everyone has gotten a chance to, to look at the several sketches and can appreciate where we're coming from. I understand, you know, the golf course is probably a great benefit to the community for a number of years. And I understand it since, it since closed down, and now what you have is just a, you know, landfill going fallow, unmaintained. And our hope is to take the nineteen acres that straddle both Prairie Grove and Farmington and, and create an opportunity for either an executive, an executive-style community or a state-style community, kind of anchoring, anchoring the three holes on the golf course. And with your help and assistance, hopefully create, you know, a cleaner, environmentally friendly solution to, to continue the housing growth in Prairie Grove. Have you, have you all had a chance to, to look at the sketches, the, the three sketches that were forwarded to Larry and the mayor?
We have not distributed them yet.
We, we're trying to put it on screen right now as you're speaking.
There we go. Ah, so it'll be a surprise for everyone, including Nick. I'll start off, I, I give you a quick primer off on it. So the, the first sketch is a yield study. What I did was I looked at the surrounding communities and tried to create a sketch utilizing the lot sizes from the projects to the east and, and the west of this piece.
We're struggling to get the file open right now, sir. If, if we can't get it open, Ms. Olrich is going to give them a detailed version from our side, just so most, most of everyone knows.
Long landmarks.
Yes, sir. Most of everyone kind of knows and understands the Valley View end of things, and so I think we're just going to turn it over to Mr. Olrich for a second and let him talk, and then we'll let you join in between them.
All right, if you guys have any questions, I mean, I.
Do y'all, just by chance, before we move on, y'all have it, where y'all can share it on y'all's screen, by chance?
I, I do, yes.
If you can share, because that's part of ours, we can't figure out how to share off-screen and not lose you guys on, on TV.
We can see it on the screen. There it is now. Oh, yeah, it's up right now. Oh, no, so that way you're going to lose us. But you can hear us, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I, I think maybe while Mr. David is going through it, you know, maybe focus on the drawings, and then when we're done, we can come back on screen. But so they can't see us right now.
No, you should, getting to see you, we, we are, we are struggling to get, well, we're seeing on our laptop, on that television, they are still seeing you guys. And so let's go back to the original idea of whether or not you can share your screen, because we can see you right now. So if you can share it on your screen, then it may work faster than us.
We've lost it now.
I sent a request to share my screen, so I think you might have to approve it.
The joy of IT.
Yeah.
When it works, it's the best thing in the world, and when you can't, when the mouse won't show up on screen.
Listen, I'm technologically challenged. I can't, all sketches are done by hand, because I can't use CAD.
Maybe you need help.
I was going to say, I feel like there's too many.
Well, I can't see anything. You don't have a class. It's everything.
The mouse, the mouse isn't working, so I can't do anything. See what I'm saying? What are you doing without a mouse? Just let me, let me just kind of preface, now we're going.
Oh, wow.
Maybe go over. This is the land going up Richardson Road. Mountain View subdivision is the subdivision that was built a couple of years ago on the left, if you're going up Richardson. And next to Mountain View, there is a section of the golf course that includes three holes. It's L-shaped, and it wraps around what is Highland Green subdivision. So it actually connects from Richardson all the way around to Jobs. And the land that they're looking at actually is probably eighty percent in Prairie Grove with maybe twenty percent in Farmington, thereabouts. And I think the proposal is for, you remember how many lots, gentlemen, there was in Prairie Grove, twenty-two or three?
Well, on the preference, on the preferred layout.
Yes, on the preferred layout.
With, with twenty in Prairie Grove.
And four.
And then five, bottom one acre lots in Farmington.
Yeah. So really, what they're asking for tonight is connection to the Valley View, which is improvement district number five, Washington County improvement district number five sewer system, which connects to Prairie Grove. In our contract with the improvement district, the city has to approve any new connections that are not listed in the contract. So what we've done in the past is we've had probably a couple of different, Mountain View was the last one. They requested permission to hook into Prairie Grove. It was in the city limits, and the city council approved those connections. In this case, twenty out of twenty-five are in the city limits of Prairie Grove. But for continuity, to do the whole piece, they need to go ahead and do that little section over there on the.
What side of the lot?
The lots vary from a half acre to an acre, correct?
Yes, yes, sir. That's correct.
Most of the ones in Prairie Grove are a half acre, and ones in Farmington are about an acre.
Twenty thousand square foot.
And I think, talking to Chuck, I don't think we have a big problem with the fact that it's only five lots on the Farmington side.
No, the Farmington side are actually larger lots, and so they are, I would call them that, exactly, yeah. Because they are larger lots than the parts that's inside the city.
So they would have the option to go that way.
We had visited with them before and told them that we don't allow any connections outside of our city limits, so they took those five acres and made five large lots. So that was in the Farmington.
Worst-case scenario, if they did have to hook on the sewer, probably not an issue.
So what the, what are we, they're asking for us to allow them to have twenty-five.
Twenty-five sewer connections, correct?
We, we would prefer the sewer connections. We could go with septic on the larger lots. The, the, the reason we would, we would prefer it from an ecological standpoint, I mean, a failed septic system will end up, eventually end up, you know, the state would probably come in and say, connect them to the sewer. The reason we went with the five large lots is that meets with, with the kind of a buy right use in Farmington, as it would in Prairie Grove as well, forty thousand square foot minimum. And we, we wanted to cap the, the number of lots to make this a little more palatable for everyone. Rather than, rather than requesting a full, you know, forty lot subdivision on the Prairie Grove side, we believe that it's, it's just a better use of the land, an opportunity to create a bit of preservation and protection with the tree line, some of the existing tree lines that the golf course will leave behind. And, and, and again, looking out for the ecological standpoint of not having a failing grain building.
And, and I do think these lots would back up to Highland Green, which are lots that rent city Prairie Grove, then back right up to those lots. So if you had a failure system, it would probably impact those residents on every side.
Sorry, I, I misunderstood what you're saying.
I'm basically agreeing with you.
Okay.
The fact that those lots back, the fact that those bad lots back, that would be Highland Green, and the septic system likely would be close to those property grounds. If it did fail, it could impact those houses.
Yeah, you are correct. And that is where, because of the way the golf course was developed, that's why I, I based the lots where I did. The road is in the fairway, the back of the lot, the, the current city ground would, wouldn't have been disturbed. Yes, you're pointing to it correctly, but wouldn't have been disturbed during the destruction of the golf course, the most likely areas for the grain fields to be.
Right. Does anybody have any questions for these guys?
Is there any action needed tonight by the council, or is it?
Other than approval of the sewer connections, this, this won't affect the actual submittal concept plan or subdivision plans. This is basically tonight just for the approval of certain.
Is this actually taking several holes off the golf course?
Yeah, there's three holes there. These are, these are three of the ones that we just filed the lien against because we're having to maintain.
Right, yeah.
So.
This is about sixty percent of what we have to.
Well, we're about to do a geotech study. We'll push talking for you.
Yeah. And, and just an FYI, and Parker, you correctly, and Ron, the lien that we just filed will go against their property taxes, correct?
Yep.
So it won't affect them purchasing it, right?
It won't affect them purchasing it. It doesn't get away, they'll have to suck it up.
But it would be satisfied by its seller and. By seller and closing, yeah.
Well, actually, we have a motive here, right? Not this year. We're getting ready to blow it, so what happened to your?
Because I was about to try and find the.
Actually, I think the first person he hired backed out the other day, so I think he's working for somebody new right now.
Yeah, well, our servant, both the surveyor and the geotech asked to have it, have it brush off.
We've, we've got some names for you, I think.
It's, it's probably about three and a half to four foot pond right now. It's pretty.
Okay.
It jumped on us pretty quickly.
I bet. I bet. Well, like I said, we, we would, we're allowed to make those arrangements. Depending on how the meeting goes. Sounds like it's going well.
Yes, well, my, my plan was to be able to display the drawings tonight, but we're, we're having some problems here.
So is this just a motion? Yeah, we moved to approve the twenty-five sewer tax.
I say.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Is this an audience, is it a roll call? Is it just all, all of you to stay on? All of those things on? All right, motion passed. Y'all are good, gentlemen? Well, y'all, if y'all want to just stay in touch with Mr. Olrich, as full as the planning and drumming, and then we'll start moving forward with this.
Thank you so much, man, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Re, recheck me the board next week if you want to. I'm going to be out of the office the rest of this week, but we'll get you charred and get you down there in a minute.
Thank you so much for your representation.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I don't know which.
Give me one second. He walked off. He says that you're going to be out of the office. He wanted to ask you something.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure, since you're going to be out of the office for the next couple of days, we're going to be making a couple of decisions here, and I just want to make sure that those twenty-five tasks that you guys are approving are printed entire thing, the buyer's market to the other twenty.
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, have a good night.
It's like the turnoff sixty-two on Richardson County.
Turnoff sixty-two.
You know, we're the new subdivision just went in.
Yeah.
Okay, it's right next to it. And it wraps all the way around the town. Be sure, my mask.
Item, item B is an ordinance to amend accessory dwelling unit requirements. And I'll, I'll really turn this over to Stephen if, if y'all have any questions. All he's trying to do is match what came down from the state side. And so nothing really changes on our side. We're just really trying to update what the state did now.
Yeah. The state passed a, an act that basically says anyone, in Arkansas, anyone is allowed to have an, except, one accessory dwelling unit by right. And we treated them as, as a condition of use in the past. It's, it's by right. You can impose additional parking requirements and handful of other things that they basically talked to us with. So we needed to go back and address our accessory dwelling unit provisions to the state thing. And Troy had, had come up to us because it's, I said, what, three or two-thirds of the lot, I think, was what the language was. And, and, and his concern there was, well, the house is sitting way back. It may be in the front of the house, and we don't want it in front of the house. We just want to make sure it's always behind the house, on the front plane. So, so we went through and made changes to our code that, that we believe puts us in compliance with the state law. You, you can still have, so it's an access, an accessory dwelling unit is a special kind of accessory structure. So you can still regulate accessory structures. You just can't have separate regulations on accessory dwelling units separate from accessory structure. So we went through and, and made some changes to that to, to keep some of the requirements that we wanted to have, such as you have to meet setback requirements. For whatever zone, what the property is in, you have to meet the setback requirements. And, and limitations on the amount of ground that is covered up by structures. So we're, we're, we've got to focus on just accessory structures, not dwelling units. So we're not targeting the dwelling units. We're just regulating our structures.
And it still can't go past the front wing of the house? Is it still there?
Yes, that was one of the things we, we changed is that the accessory structure must be located behind the front, the edge of the house.
Still have to meet building code, still as a residential structure. But, you know, for all practical purposes, this has taken the city's ability to zone for single-family away, because every lot now could be.
Multifamily.
Multifamily.
Yep. There's a couple. I think there's definitely one I know of.
Well, we, we've always allowed it for family members, as long as they don't use it as a rental. So they weren't allowed to charge rent, and weren't allowed to rent to anybody other than a family member. But with the new law, they can rent to anybody, but we can't increase the amount of parking they have, which really irks me, because now that's just going to be that many more homes in the street. So you can have a two-family lot and basically have to have the same number of parking required for a single family as well.
So it's almost like saying I can build a couple of houses behind mine.
Well, not one.
You mean, make one. Not much we do for this. We made it this down. We just got to comply with their new order.
We, yeah.
But we got some room, but we got to make our.
We tried, we tried to keep as much of our requirements as we could by taking them off of accessory dwelling units and putting them on accessory structure. Which can include pools, decks.
Can't be more than a thousand square foot.
Storage buildings, et cetera, et cetera. So we, so we're. We tried to keep as much as we could by putting it on any accessory structure, not just an accessory dwelling.
But Chris had a question under here. So we're, we're just trying to figure out the accessory dwelling unit requirements, right?
It's bringing the blinds up the news table.
Yeah, he said, oh, saying that.
We, we.
It's pretty much saying that any lot now is a multifamily lot, not, you can't just have a single.
Basically saying anybody who wants to have one in their rear two-thirds of their lot.
Are allowed to have them. You can do that. Yeah. But I don't, I don't see what.
If it's already a lot.
Well, it's because we don't match state, and so state, when state required, when state made their changes, we're just changing to adapt to what they, what they force in every municipality.
And that's something we have to, you have to bring to the council.
Yes.
If it's a law.
Because we're changing, we're changing our food.
Okay.
There is one, our ordinance.
What is the rules place, or is it perjury and the title of the law?
Second.
I have a motion by Doug, a second by Bree. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Chris Powell.
Yes.
Audrey Wetzel.
Yes.
Bree Gregg.
Yes.
Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Kevin Andrews.
Yes.
Two plus, yeah.
Ah, yeah. I guess I agree.
Yes.
An ordinance to amend accessory dwelling unit requirements.
You're perishing the rules place, like, reading without the order.
Second.
Motion by Doug, second by Bree. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Chris Powell.
Yes.
Audrey Wetzel.
Yes.
Bree Gregg.
Yes.
Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Doug Stoneball. Kevin Andrews.
Yes.
Two plus, yeah.
Motion passes. Moving on to item C, an ordinance to amend fees for building permits, and I'm going to turn this one over to Larry Olrich.
We are, as you probably knew beginning of the year, we contracted with a company called High Work for all of our permitting software. And we've been utilizing it for about two months now. We've been at Troy after we did all of our training and learned the system. We started offering it to our contractors. They can have permit online. We started offering it to our contractors about a month ago. They go to a portal, they fill out their application, they submit their drawings online, they submit their permit online. We give them their approval online, and we send them copies of their permits online. One thing we couldn't do with the system that we purchased, because we didn't, initially, we did not purchase the payment portal that goes with it. We weren't sure we were going to utilize it, but we found out real quick, the contractor's pretty much demanding to be able to pay online. So we went ahead and contacted them, and we added that portal. They give us two options, basically. They use, they use a company called PayRock to process their online payments. Option one requires that the city pay three point five percent or two dollars, whichever is greater. Now, on a three or four thousand dollar permit, it's obviously going to be more than two dollars, and three point five percent is a good chunk of money. So the other option is the city pays a flat three point two five percent in a monthly fees. If we do the client where they pay three point five percent, that's, that's a lot of money, and what we're afraid it'll do is actually discourage contractors from paying online. I mean, three point five percent on a two to three thousand dollar permit, I'm going to come into City Hall and do what you're supposed to do online, even if it's a three or four hundred dollar permit, I'm lucky. So what we're proposing is just to amend our permit fees, and what we're talking about doing, we've, we've done some calculations. We think this will cover those fees. We think the fees will amount to about ten thousand dollars a year for the city, if the city just says the flat three point two five percent. The fees would be twenty-five dollars per permit. Typical permit is five hundred dollars for a residential structure. So we'd add twenty-five dollars, which will be called the base permit fee, and we would add that to every building permit fee. On the mechanical fees, the electric, the gas, the plumbing, the HVAC, we currently charge fifteen dollars. We would increase that to twenty. It's already fifteen dollars a fee. We would not bump it to twenty. Between those two things, we think I've covered our fees for using the auto entitlement system. So that's what we're proposing tonight, is just to bump our base fees enough to cover these transaction fees.
Since this is something that goes back to the citizens, is anyone here like to speak about that? They will know, and it goes back to the council.
Hey, Larry.
Yes.
Is that, is that the same for commercial?
Yes, I think they're all twenty-five.
I can't remember who says.
Commercial was fifty.
Okay.
I was having a thing to say. Yes, I made the commercial fifty. A tenth of commercial permits you're in the passes, so.
Multi-family, commercial, and industry, I'll all make fifty.
Yeah.
Any questions?
The rules place the order, perjury and the title of the law.
Move to the rule place, order first, re, and the title line.
Second.
Who with my second? I have a motion by Doug, a second by Audrey. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Chris Powell.
Yes.
Audrey Westall.
Yes.
Free Greg.
Yes.
Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Doug Stoneball.
Yes.
Kevin Andrews.
Yes.
Two plus.
An ordinance to amend fees for building permits.
First, go to rule play, second, third, read it out the order.
Second.
Do you have a motion and second? Any further discussion? Roll call.
Chris Powell.
Yes.
Audrey Westall.
Yes.
Free Greg.
Yes.
Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Doug Stoneball.
Yes.
Kevin Andrews.
Yes.
Two plus.
Yes.
Larry, you have a question.
Hey.
Are we taking the payments now? So are we already being assessed this fee?
No.
No.
Well, it's gonna need the emergency call.
We haven't gone online yet.
No, I have to get a pay rock and give them all our tenant information so that once we make payment, it'll go into the right account.
We'll definitely do training next week.
Yes.
So are we going to wait the sixty day window or?
We. Well, I.
Yeah. I mean. We'll roll it out. We're going to get hit for the fee, but we're not charging them the fee to cover our cost of the fee.
We, we can initiate the payment system anytime we want to. So, I mean, it's, it's in our control.
So you can wait, you can wait sixty days before you started accepting the payments.
We can.
I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure we weren't going to be hit for the fee while we're not charging them the fee.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just leaving it.
Does that make it complicated, Melissa? First, two. So here's the first thing. Is this, is this appropriate to an emergency boss?
Most people, they're asking.
If it's not appropriate, then.
It's, it's.
Okay.
It's borderline.
Then let's just move on and we'll, we'll deal with it in a minute.
A, another option is, I mean, if somebody comes into the office and takes their credit card down, they're still paying, the city is still paying a fee, but it's, it's considerably less than three point two five percent. You know what our fee is in the front desk?
And about that, when everything added up, we, we've come to our best, it's about three, four, two, five.
So we're almost paying that now. So it really doesn't make a difference.
Let's say, and, and the truth is, we've, we're making decisions for long-term health, not, not necessarily the sixty days, but I do appreciate you bringing up because we could have, we could have made it work. There's no reason to be blowing a line.
Getting hit with multifamily permit or single family permit?
Well, it's all basic, some of it gets bigger.
So, so just go back to what we're talking about before, it's really goes to the house and it's time to build another dwelling back there. Do that do work?
Different permit.
So. We're going to wave, it's like a song.
Yes, they already did.
Yeah.
All right, we're moving on to item E. Audit excuse me, item D, an ordinance to accept the dedication of additional street right of way to Picket Ridge, and this will also be terminated in the storage. That computer will not come up, will it?
I'm getting the portal now. I switch computers. We get them for years.
I can give a little bit on it. The property owner is wanting to do a lot split up there and and the only way they can do that is if the city street is part of our master street plan in the long run. And so he's dedicating the right of way for our future street so he can go ahead and not make that land up for sale to a certain, somebody's car instead.
Which one are they doing this subdivision on? Is it order?
It's order.
Okay, and there was one of those too, and then we said, well, if they're already building a street, yeah, well, eventually they're going to extend ticket.
I've got a lot of pretty pictures here for you to show you, but uh, neither computer wants to help.
Lewis, Lewis family? Larry's one's been working.
Uh, the Hancock family is the one that actually proposed this and how it started, Grant Hancock is on the end of Picket Ridge for as long as I've been around. So when we first accepted Picket Ridge, uh, we, we accepted everything down to where his cattle yard was at the time. This has been twenty five years ago. Harv had them that long because you were city attorney.
Hasn't been quite that.
It's been, we annexed in two thousand sixteen and a few years later, we took it up. The city council agreed with that. You want? Picket Ridge, you see, if you go out one seventy or Walnut Row, that's the second rung on the, or third rung on the left.
Okay.
The gravel.
It's a gravel.
Okay.
Okay. It was gravelled in there last year. So we took it, we, we dedicated it, we got easements all the way to where his cattle yard was. A few years later, he did a lot split and he planted a street to the end of where his lot split was. It was never filed with the city. The city never accepted it, but he did plant it. Now he wants to split off a lot at the end of this to the Lewis family. And we denied it because he already had more users than he could have in the private ground. So one thing we suggested to him is, because we did want the right of way all the way to the end of his property, was that he extend the road right away all the way to the north of his property. So it splits him right there in the middle now. It's on our master street plan. It made sense for us to go ahead and get that plan. So by going ahead and dedicating that as a street, now he can go ahead and do his lot split.
A lot.
But it's on our master street plan. We've wanted it anyway.
I haven't seen it because.
Stay in your street with, you're staying in your street.
Sixty foot. So it's actually, it's actually even wider than that.
Move to the rule play, first, re, and the title line.
Second.
I have a motion by Doug, second by Bree. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Chris Powell.
Yes.
Audrey Westall.
Yes.
Free Greg.
Yes.
Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Doug Stoneball.
Yes.
Kevin Andrews.
Yes.
Two plus.
Yes.
An ordinance to accept the dedication of additional street right of way to Picket Ridge Road.
Move first, go to the rule play, second, third, read it out the order.
Thank.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Chris Powell.
Yeah.
Audrey Westall.
Yes.
Free Greg.
Yes.
Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Doug Stoneball.
Yes.
Kevin Andrews.
All these passes and we move to item E, which is an ordinance to provide for the rezoning of certain lanes in Kerr Grove owned by Arch and Craft LLC. And I'm sure we would have a great slideshow for you, but it is not working. This.
He's got pictures hanging. On Vine Grove Road, we have a bear. If you'll remember, two months ago, I'm, was, we did a rezoning for Dixie McSpadden along Vine Grove Road. Everybody remember that? This is basically two lots down.
On the other side of Stonecrest.
Yes.
Yes. For the old White Houses.
Yes.
We actually look like that White House too.
It's, it's actually the lot.
Not, not the house.
Not the house. And they have asked for the same zoning, our one point five that we had a couple months ago, and now Picket Ridge is coming up.
We're all working with someone on that White House and they're working, they're working with this buyer here, so we.
We think it's going to go ways into it.
Oh, good.
How many lots that they want to put in there?
Basically, right now. It's changed owners so many times, I can't take it.
He told us. Didn't he tell us that, any question the other night?
There's a new owner now as of last week.
Two, oh, great. There you go.
Yeah, I would never ask. I forget how much it costs.
Arch and Craft, they have closed on it, so they come on there.
Okay.
Larry, adjacent houses is the same zone, isn't that correct? Or?
Because it's, uh, all of Stonecrest is our one point five and that is one point five as well, which is the land that it borders.
Move to the rule play, order first, re, and the title line.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Doug and a second by Bree. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Chris Powell.
Yes.
Audrey Westall.
Yes.
Free Greg.
Yes.
Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Yes.
Kevin Andrews.
An ordinance to provide for the rezoning of certain lanes in Kerr Grove, Arkansas, currently owned by Arch and Craft LLC, modification of the zoning map and of emptying the zoning ordinance.
Move first, go to rule play, say, third, read it out the order.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion by Doug and a second by Kevin? Any further discussion? Roll call.
Chris Powell.
Yes.
Audrey Westall.
Yes.
Free Greg.
Yes.
Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Doug Stoneball. Kevin Andrews. Two plus, yeah.
Mayor Paul. Further minutes, do you have that, what it was going to be rezoned to?
Our one point five.
One five, one five. Item F, an ordinance to establish fire lanes in downtown, and I'll turn it over to Chief Casey Dawes.
In, uh, just research, we learned that there are four alleys, three unnamed and one that is mock drive. That has never been dedicated as a fire lane. That'd be the alley that's south of the Buchanan Street Business Districts. North of the Buchanan Street Business Districts, which is named Mock Drive, the alley that runs north between Ligonville Funeral Home and Sonic, and then it also runs east and west, north of the Ligonville Funeral Home property. And another piece of Ligonville Funeral Home property, Harold Smith and Jerry Lincoln. And my office, those, three of those were having a name and never have. And I can only refer to the one nearby Smith Tractor, it's Smith Alley. Uh, that's the other, the other uh one that runs north and south. Uh, it's never been named, but I mean, I think in the protection of the back of Business Districts as well as home company, I mean, everything on that north side and the south side. The main street between Mock Street and Neal Street. And it's imperative that emergency apparatus, whether it be fire, ambulance, or police, they can be able to access, they will balance. I think we have those dedicated as uh, time. And with that, I, I try to mean, we want to try to impose a whole lot more regulations than what already is there now and just be able to keep them open for accidents.
And I know, no, least Charlie Bradley may be here to speak about it, but anyone who wants to speak, please, please come on.
They say, do those have to be painted?
I'm sorry.
Do they have to be painted?
No.
So a couple of concerns I have about this is uh, that, the one I'm talking about is the one that the city calls Mock Drive. Between Neal and Mock. And then from Mock to on down behind Ace.
Kate Smith.
Kate Smith. One is we use that for loading, unloading a lot, but behind the businesses. Another is that's the only street, and I don't know if it matters, if this matters or not, but that's the only street that the city doesn't own. That is all businesses own that property. Um, it is a street name, but there's no city street there. There's no, the city doesn't own any of that property. And um, it's just an alley. Um, because all the building properties go past the the drive and into the parking lot. And we, and then I brought it up to uh, Bart at Ace and, you know, he's got trucks parked in there all the time, loading and unloading and being a fire lane, he wouldn't be able to do that. And then we always park right there in the alley to load, unload customers. We're loading customers. And then the other concern is the Kerr Grove Code says anything under sixty two thousand square feet and under three stories only requires one fire lane access. And that is canon right now. And it only requires two fire lane back and front if it's above three stories or over sixty two thousand square feet. So um, the reasoning for adding a second one, I'm not sure, but if there is a fire lane, it also the code says you can't build anything within ten feet of that fire lane. So it limits any kind of building that anyone would want to do with the property that is owned. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. We, can you address the loading and unloading? Because I, I mean, obviously. Okay, obviously building on it would be an issue, but, but loading and unloading.
And that is, uh, Mock Drive behind on the, between Ace and our federal garage lodge is owned by the Kerr Grove.
Yeah, behind Ace is, but uh, from uh, Moss and Neal is not.
No, we're not addressing that. We're just addressing from Moss to, uh, Moss meaning not Moss to Kate Smith. Moss Kate Smith on its own by the city.
Yes, I'm saying from Moss to Neal.
Were you referring to Ace?
Well, I, I said, I guess I would refer to Ace, uh, because it did a part, but yes, but. Yeah.
Do you have any question?
Since the building lines, does that change since it's the central building, central business district, the, the distance from the fire lane? I mean, those shared walls, so does that zoning change differ from what you're saying about?
I can't answer how setbacks relate to fire lanes. That's a fire thing that, I mean, I'm not.
Fire will do nothing about setbacks on fire.
Well, because there is no setback in downtown, right?
There is a, there is a rear setback. There's no side setback. And the rear setback, I believe, is ten foot. I don't think that's an issue for any of those buildings down there, but.
Those are all the business.
Yeah, they come then, they're grandfathered kind of three point five.
Well, it does say in there, you cannot build a in, in the city ordinance, it says you can't build anything within ten foot. So the, what I'm getting at is the parking lot, if in the future I wanted to build a storage facility in the parking lot, I could not build within ten feet of the hurricane that is installed.
Right, in terms of fire lane. Um, for second Saturdays, we have done, and probably will move again, um, events back there will be closed off that alleyway because of the amount of people that are walking to and around and around. So we would no longer be able to do that with.
Well, I mean, I think we've made a provision for certain, I mean, it's like we closed off the, the main street for a street.
Sure, but would it be as difficult, uh, an ordeal to close it off as it is the street because it, it's always a big ordeal to close the street off?
Well, I mean, it's going to be.
You have to hire officers and it's a big, you know, cost. Is that, that's, is that going to be the same issue?
I don't think it would be. I mean.
Would be easier.
Yeah, because it's just a, in many cases, it's an alleyway. So when we're talking about closing down the main street, we're talking about redirecting all traffic and, so it's a, it's a little bit more complicated than, than the idea of an, of an alleyway.
Does it matter that it's, is it a street? Is it, is it a street city street? That between Moss and Neal, I, I don't, I'm asking every question.
I, I mean, it's called Mock Drive and that's just what I, I mean, it shows as Mock Drive.
I've, I've never, I've never seen anything that indicates that long since it is a right.
How does it affect the people that own that that street that ends?
Well, I mean, maintaining the environment, just like going to protect, I mean, their property. I mean, that's the whole thing that I'm looking, I'm not looking at, you know, maybe more stringent awards, you know, impose new rules on anything, we're just trying to maintain that.
One of those buildings caught on fire, just making sure that you can.
Yeah, you can get down there. Because I can assure you, I mean, while Buchanan Street is open, if, if there's a major fire on either side of that street, the middle of the road is not where you're going to want to place fire for that. I mean, you're going to, it's going to be the fact.
Didn't you have fire there a year or two ago?
The flower shop, the flower shop do have a fire. I mean, I, we're not, I, or at least from my standpoint, I'm just trying to protect those access and, and means of egress. And I'm not trying to make it where we're doing anything different than what we're doing right now.
I'm just curious, um, after, why after all this time, we all want to do this?
Because I, I did not realize that they weren't already dedicated fire lanes or, I mean, Mark, I, I've been under the impression for years that Mock Drive is a free.
So what, what changes from the way it's been fifty years before now to if it does become a problem? What, I mean, what changes? Just my opinion, we can.
I, I really think it just comes down to you couldn't, you couldn't build on that fire lane. So I don't know if the argument becomes that you couldn't build in your parking lot, but you couldn't build in that fire lane because you couldn't put a permitted structure in that fire lane.
What's the, the point is, so I guess my concern is that, is it diminishes the value of the property?
Yes, in, in many cases it does. But it also protects your property as far as having a fire lane. So I guess it depends on what side of the coin you're on when you're thinking of it. But we all, we all approaching on your property. I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to mince words on that. Like, it, you're one hundred percent right. When you talk about Mock Drive, everyone's, every business's property runs on that back corridor. Like, it, you're one hundred percent right, when you talk about Mock Drive, everyone's, every business's property runs on that back corridor. But when we're talking about the protection of whether or not buildings, and when you have those zero lot lines. If that fire runs, we could lose a whole downtown in the process of a fire, so. When, when we're looking, or when the chief is looking at, how will we protecting people from his side on the fire side? Like, that becomes an important thing, and so he's looking from his side, obviously, you guys are looking from the business side. And then, then we're just trying to make the right decision for the direction of our city. And so you really almost have three different perspectives here, where you're talking safety, when you're talking property rights, and where you're just talking about the direction of the city. But if you, if, if it does catch on, like when we're listening to chief. If it does catch on fire, then, then obviously that's something that we want to be prepared for, well. But in the same sense, we, I'm sure all these men and women up here listen to the, the idea of the property rights of the, the business owner as well.
Do, do the insurance companies just naturally assume that those are fire lanes behind those businesses?
I've been probably for years they have.
Yeah.
You know, as I say, if I had.
Don't you call them, tell them they're not? That way you can have your rates go up, you know, I mean, the thing is. It's, you make it a fire lane, it's not, it's not going to disturb any of your business. I mean, it's not taking away from any of your business if you make it a fire lane, right?
It diminishes the value of my property.
How does it do that? Cause it's just a fire lane.
Cause you can no longer use that, actually, you can no longer use that property. It's not basically a city, it's city, basically.
Well, I mean, where do you need support anyway? I mean, is it, it's a lane.
I, what you wanna?
Potentially we could build that, so you could build on the lane.
You can build on a lane?
It's a side of a fire lane, yes, it's right now, it's just property.
Okay.
We don't, we don't know that there's any proof that states that that's a city street, and so unless it's a state property. And so, but what J C's saying is that, that the worry about any kind of disaster from the fire, he needs a fire lane. And so, and not just that street, that just happens to be the one that, where we approaching on someone else. And so theoretically, if it doesn't pass tonight, Mr. Bradley or Mrs. Shreve could go leave here tonight and start designing. The idea of that building running back, and they could take that property and they could expand that building on it, and then you don't have a lane back there. It also means you don't have a fire lane either, you know.
Or parking, or.
Public access.
Public, public asset, very, yes.
The city's established fire lanes on private property, um, you've noticed in front of Walmart, there's a fire.
Right, there's always firing, yeah.
And it's established by.
Yeah, and, for everybody to know, there is a state statute. Fourteen fifty-four, five oh one states. Governing bodies of the municipalities of this state are delegated for power and authority to enact ordinances to limit and control the use of areas adjacent to shopping centers. And other commercial enterprises which are privately owned. But which are maintained for the convenience of the public so as to provide ingress, egress, loading and unloading. Fire lanes, parking space and parking areas designated for exclusive use of disabled persons and other measures for the safety and convenience of the public. So that's, that's where our authority to. Designate a fire lane on private property comes from.
I understand, I understand, basically, I understand that, and I understand it helps protect the building. But I'm also. We already meet. Code for the city by having a fire lane. By all those buildings, even if you add all that building together, it's under sixty-two thousand square feet, so it only requires one side of the building having a fire lane. Uh, and they're all under three stories, according to the Prairie Grove Code. If it's under sixty-two thousand square feet and under three stories. It only requires one side of the building having a fire lane.
Are there fire hens out there, are there any?
There's one on Neal Street, just south of Mock Drive. Mock Street, just south of Buchanan, and then there's one, uh, north. Just out of Park Street. So, I mean, they've been distant, but they're not, they're no, they're not waterlogged, runs down Mock Drive.
It's not, the Buchanan's uh, the water.
Counsel, any questions? I have a. I have a motion, second, any further discussion? Go, Paul.
First foul.
Yes.
Audrey Watson, yes, we're grand.
Yes.
Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Doug Sumbo.
Yes.
Kevin Andrews.
Yes.
Sue Clark.
Yeah.
And ordinance to establish fire lanes downtown.
With first been ruled with second, third reason not authority.
Do you have a motion, second, any further discussion? Go, Paul.
First foul.
Yes.
Audrey Watson, yes, we're grand.
Yes.
Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Doug Sumbo.
Yes.
Kevin Andrews.
Yes.
Sue Clark.
Motion passes, and we own item G, a resolution to approve change orders one through six, the SSI construction for the police department expansion. The. Number six, and y'all, they were in front of you last night, we actually voided number six. So we will basically get a, a credit for six hundred and thirty-five dollars. What you see in these different change orders is that we're still underneath the original, the original uh, budget we had was one point. Four oh four seven four one oh six. We've done, chief has worked with Precious and with SSI to just move a wall here, move a wall there. Change this up here and change it there, and for the most part, everything has deducted in price. We've had one thing that increased in price, and that was if you walk down a hallway. You'll see where, if you, if you look, if the door was open to the men's bathroom, you can see the urinal. And so we was worried about the idea that someone would be walking down a hallway, a door would be open, and you would see someone using the restroom. And so we added a wall to, to go in it, we kind of blocked the, the vision of going in and out. That was an added cost, outside of that, everything has been reduced. And still to this day, we're a negative eight thousand seven hundred and seven dollars and seventy-one cents from the original budget we had. So we're still lower than the actual budget, and uh, don't really see any, any other change orders. We have one that'll probably come in next month, where we change some curb and stuff, and I'm getting a little ahead of myself, but that's a wash, it would be a zero lot one. So we don't see anything that would increase, that we should end up on, under budget. Hopefully, if everything continues to go, um, we'll end up on the budget, and so we just need your approval on these six change orders.
Move to approve.
I have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose same song. Motion passes, the public committee sanitation, seat clerk.
Um, everything's going well in sanitation, um, full staff. It's always a good thing, uh, one thing we've noted on here was the grass cutting in Valley View. Uh, we don't have the updates on that because our contractor backed out. He, he was all excited about giving it to us because he does that for a living, and then once he looked at it, he said, well, make it a little bit more, I want to jump on it.
Chuck, is this the same thing we're talking about with the contractor?
Yes, yes.
So if this development moves through and they want to plan on, you know, paying somebody to rush out if we can find that, let's do that. That would be great, so we're gonna reach out to somebody who has done some work for us in the past. Uh, so he's in high demand, so I just didn't think, you know, he'd be interested in doing it on a regular basis.
And we have sent letters to the owners, just like we did last year, before they've returned without any, without them accepting those letters. And so me and Polka had, have had two meetings on it already, because we were gonna try to start pushing on them like we do other people at long, to try to get them into the court system. But the court system is a small fun compared to the idea of us cutting it and then going after the tax revenue of paying ourselves back. And so on the uh, on the uh, the input of our attorney was, hey, send the letters and let's start that process, but we really, we need to start getting on cutting it. And we know that's gonna be thousands upon thousands of dollars, us, last year's cut in the fall. Was almost sixteen thousand itself, because we have to rent the equipment and then the manpower that goes behind it. So, we, I'm glad that this was on the backside and it didn't have to interfere with what y'all did tonight, but I'm glad to know that someone wants to buy that review. And this may put an end to what we're doing, we truthfully, we hope to get the money, but you just kind of never know.
Like, like he said, that, that the on the seller.
Yes.
To collect that, so we should be able to rekindle.
We should, we should be able to, but I mean, when we, when you're jumping into stuff like that, you, you're hoping that the legal process works out. But, you know, it's still a process, and we may get the money, maybe next year before we get that money back, and. So, you know, we talked about brush yesterday, and after rekindle that one, but what we talked about was going into debt. And, you know, what we do when we cut that grass, we go into debt, and we hope that we regain that money, so. Um, but we have started that process and we all looking into, you know, keeping our city clean and uh. And fighting with that family over, over that money, but. If, if it works out, I, I got you, if it works out with this new developer, it, it may be a, a answer to a prayer, yes, sir.
Are they buying all the property that is in Prairie Grove? Or there's, will there be some property in Prairie Grove?
They didn't talk about the property that's on the south side of Richardson Road, so I don't know if they're interested in that or not.
There's one, and it's by that, that collection pond, that I don't think anyone's gonna ever develop it, just because how close it is to it. And so I know that they talked to Larry about looking at it, but I, I, we think that once they find out that they can't build within a certain vicinity. That they would probably back off on it, but, I mean, I, that's still up for discussion.
So, basically, you're gonna be responsible for all of that until somebody does buy.
Yes, sir. Or, or the, the owners step up. We're gonna give them the benefit of the doubt, but you know the answer, you know? Yeah, but you know what, we, we would much rather have to fight with one section, because right now we fighting four different sections, and so it's a. Like I said, it's a, so, these gentlemen stepping up, and hopefully it works out for everyone to benefit on that one. Street Department, Audrey Watson.
The party tech.
See the guys that are, uh, out doing sidewalk and doing some of the street maintenance, as weather permitting, we're trying to get those knocked out. Uh, we are, we've got, I think, four more sidewalk projects that we have budgeted for this year, and we'll be able to take care of it. Some of it's replacing old sidewalk and some of it's new. One of the things that we really want to push forward is the new sidewalk that connects downtown along the Pittman. And I think right now we have the funding to go as far as Park Street. There, and it's gonna be on the west side, you know, there by the Sonic, and it'll come all the way down and connect to the downtown. Uh, cause after school, you see kids and they're just walking down the showroom pit, they really like to go get them. And then, uh. I, now that I have this, bid for North Mock today. Because I think with the uh, doing off of what we did last year in the same numbers. Placing the budget, we might be able to do it sometime this summer. And it's gonna go from the alley of, uh, Mock Drive, north, all the way to Bush Street, from curb to curb. So, and so that'll advertise Sunday, and we'll open bid on that June fifth. If we don't have the funding when the bid comes back, we can always put it on the back burner, but I think we can find a place, we can get that done this year. Because our, uh, next project for downtown will not go past the alley.
I was gonna bring that.
Our drainage improvement started at the alley and then go south on the Buchanan, and then continue these.
And unfortunately, the, the update on downtown is just more frustration. We, we literally meet with them every single week, and every single week we get the same exact thing, uh, we're really close, we, we, we think we're gonna be there, and then weeks and weeks and weeks go by.
We now include R dot.
Yeah.
And so we're just still, keep it on hold, and they say it's in-house, they have a committee that has to look at it. And uh, so it's not just one of the people reviewing it, they have, they have a committee that has to go over all of our specs.
Um, June second, and I, according to our meeting today, uh. The street department and water department, we work together, but they're gonna clean up downtown streets to get us ready for Jump Fest. So it's not gonna look beautiful, but we're gonna try to go in and do a bunch of patchwork and just make it a little bit more cohesive to.
Industrial friendly.
Yes. And then if, you know, the truth is, and, and here's just honesty on this one, because as we, as we continue to prolong. Um, you know, it's easy to money money quarterback, and I'm gonna money money quarterback myself, we talked about this nine months ago. Do we just go in there, do we kind of clean it, do we scrape some back, do we patchwork it, and do we put thousands of dollars of manpower and cold patch on there? When all dot and our engineers are saying, oh man, we're gonna be ripping up roads in two to three months. And so we backed off, and then, you know, three or four months goes by and you're like, well, we're in the same spot, do we, so we called into them again. No, man, I'm like, we right, we right on the edge, hundred percent plans a day, well, now we ten months later. And we just gone, I wish I'd have just made the call nine months ago, that's just a treat, and.
We uh, and those two messages.
Then, I bet we could, yeah.
So, there's been two tire replacements.
Okay.
There's lots of P D tires.
Can we, we probably get on that this, this week or tomorrow, I don't know about tomorrow, because I'm, we got them guys running, but, but we get it done.
Yeah, we can do that.
More than two with Doug Sumbo.
Very good.
Finally, the wastewater bank is like. It's done, we're finalizing all tanks, um, and so, well, we're in at full capacity. We don't use a third train yet, because our flow doesn't dictate us having to turn it on, but we do have that capability. And with that capability, we can also a lot more central testing. So, uh, we are testing triple. And of course, our cost of labs and, and uh, some of those results is taking more time and more money as well. But uh, it's going really good, uh, wastewater, one of the capacity projects you see started over there on Baggage Street. Uh, that's the deepest part of the project, so they're gonna start there with the new manholes and then they'll work their way back. And then go down Butler and then they'll terminate at, uh, South Palm. And that'd be a new twelve inch line that will relieve some of the capacity that's going through Willow Creek, uh, Prairie Meadows and Old Silver Road. And so the phase two of that particular project will be the new force main that goes up industrial, that will start. Either towards the end of this project or immediately after it, so we'll have to help those go. And we have designed, uh, being started on another capacity of pipe, about six hundred feet along Park Street. For development of the future for the school, anything else that goes out on that side of the bypass. And then they're also designing a new twelve inch or sixteen inch waterline crossing at the creek, just south of our water facility. The first year I was here, it washed out, exposed the pipe, and I thought it's always been a priority. And now we've got to design, we have a little bit of money left over to some of the other projects, that's gonna give us a, that's gonna give us a bid this year, or at least get a bid and get a settlement. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Call it Kevin Andrews.
Um, everything was divided off and broken down, and the city walks away with, uh. Forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-six cents.
Good sir, fire department, Chris Paul.
We'll give it to chief.
Pretty much business as usual, I sent you the report, hopefully we got it yesterday. Uh, front, front volume was down, it was a little bit last month over same, uh, in April. Twenty twenty-four, but still overall, year to date, we're about eleven to ten, heavy, four, we're at twenty-four.
Were you, were you guys on alert last night for the storms?
Yeah, we went and watched, or everybody was well alerted, and then we went out and opened up roads to downtown, pretty much, it was about that little area that would come across. Moment, maybe there was a couple of farms, uh, and for doors, tractor doors, got damaged, a lot of trees down, but.
Box and rock, Chris Paul.
Well, I know that pool's gonna, when it's Friday, I don't know if they're gonna be in or not.
We get, we get approval Wednesday, Thursday?
Normal, we have, uh, department health to be here at nine thirty, and that'll be about four and a half hours, and we'll get back. And uh, but they are very thorough, they check everything. Uh, when they get through with that, then we'll go over to Reed Park, because they like to do the concession stands and, and that area while they're here. Uh, our permit runs from April thirtieth to April thirtieth, going over, and uh, and so they always come in, run about this.
That's a general inspection, right?
Yep, they just walk through and make sure everything's going right, and make sure that food preparation is.
You mean, having like, any bad, hurting, eye tree, anything over there?
Uh, we, uh, they've been really lucky, uh, the guys have done a really good job of winterizing it last year, uh, they've been doing some. Paintings and touch-up work last couple of days, weather permitting, but yeah, it all looks really good.
I know baseball field's looking pretty good, considering all the rain.
I don't know how they're gonna get the things in, I think they're gonna end up maybe having round robin tournaments on Thursday.
Right.
Pushing them back a week.
But are they really pushing it back?
I can say my grandkids, they play downstairs on that, and then they'll play almost three weeks.
Right.
And they're playing one game a week, maybe.
Wow.
Well, they don't know how they're gonna make all theirs, uh, cause theirs has to be, depending on certain time, but yeah, all this rain is really plain havoc only.
Money pork's still looking pretty good over there.
Pork was flooded, put some new trees in there, uh, the new camera system we put in there actually paid off the other day.
Good.
So we got a lawyer in the morning, said, hey, can you come up to pull the cameras? They had a, uh, pretty serious event, and it was part of the investigation, so we got good footage.
Good, yeah.
So yeah, we'll settle it.
Thank you. Well, let Doug kick them all cool.
The little ports, when our guys come up and do the dirt work, then we'll start thinking about getting our concrete. Because one of the biggest expenses was doing all the dirt work and the concrete, so we decided to do dirt work and house.
The guy is gonna be in concrete?
I'm sorry?
The guy is gonna be in concrete?
Uh, yeah. We have two different bids. One is within the range and one or the other will do it because we have extra additional references, so.
Police department, Doug Stumble.
First two. Uh, I'll, that's what Casey said, busy. Um, we've been stringing this. We've served a lot of certain warrants. Um. Actually, O'Brien's been out doing some of the detective stuff again. He's a full-time detective now. He's so around. Chuck mentioned, um, the cameras are great. We, we always have salespeople trying to sell us cameras. There's some nice ones and they're great, um, but it's, it's in the debt, it's about money, uh, but they are very important. So hopefully one day we can get all the parts because. Um, case of, it was arson case and it's still ongoing. Um, so we, we've had some pretty big cases. Um, it's busy. Um. Clicker ticket, seatbelt, stem campaign started yesterday. They'll run, I think, for a full week, so for the next few days, we'll have several options to go.
Chief, I don't know if O'Brien told you and uh, and I don't remember all the details, but O'Brien did stay late yesterday, talked to me a little bit. He talked to the. The people from Bush Street that came in and so they kind of have a game plan going on over the next month or so uh to really hit that area.
And, and we all know this, you know, we are still number one complaint is highway sixty-two, road rage drivers. We still catch them going eighty-nine, eighty, close to a hundred miles an hour. Before we get off with fatality crash. We got, it, it's, it's not that Prairie Grove is any different from anywhere, any city in this state, any city. Uh, in countries, I'm telling you, this, you, you never stop stop sign, you never stop speed or what we do, we proactive, always what we wanna do. Um, it's just, I, I wish that there was a way that we could. Um, typically we hit those spots and it does slow down. Um, you only got two officers, not a three officers. Uh, the difference, you know, they get one stop or one rest or one report, they're, they're gone hours. They may be at child safety center. It seems like every week we've got somebody sitting there in Springfield or doing something for hours. Um, but there is a plan for, for that, so. And obviously the gentleman that spoke about the golf cart, I think I sent out an email. I know O'Brien's gonna do some research. On that as well. And I spoke with the gentleman a little bit yesterday. I mean, um, so obviously he, he just moved to town. He's wanting to ride his golf cart, City Street. Um, so I'll, I'll send out an email, um, which you hate to be the part of people, which I, I get it. Um, I live in town many, many years. There is some, some issues and problems. Um, I'm gonna try to reach out. Um, right now I don't know of any other city actually that allows it. So that's kind of, I think that says a little bit of something, but we're running some research on the police side, obviously, um, some information. We, we mainly got safety concerns, obviously. Um, it's like anything, you're gonna have a lot of folks that's gonna use it, be smart, no problems. Then you have some that, that's typically running for everybody. And we have been getting a lot of complaints on that. Um, there's actually some folks from the neighborhood that coming yesterday, obviously the storm, the weather coming, coming in. So I participate, they'll probably hear next council meeting, um, but they, they don't support it. So, aren't they busy? Um, got all this good?
Chris, if, if. The issue on Bush Street with the dump trucks? I mean, I, I drive that way a lot every day, probably six, seven times, and I haven't seen many dump trucks on Bush, but that doesn't mean.
Seven maybe.
I was just gonna say, it doesn't mean there's periods when.
That, that feeling is out of pocket, but I would kind of.
If we can locate the dump, whoever the company is that owns the dump, can we proactively reach out?
So this, this is ongoing problem, you know, you know, West Viney Grove, because there was issue, they, they've diverted them from Harmington. So when all the trucks we got going on, these guys are gonna find the path to West River.
So the county has to buy trucks that way?
Yes, so they're, so typically they'll do that and then they'll be yawned. It depends on what, what project they're working on. You see a lot of that, so.
Well, I was thinking, I was thinking if we could find out who that trucking company was and breed after them, I guarantee you that driver's probably gonna be gone.
Yes, it was.
Well, it's not even, it's not even that too, because if, if you just pull them over, especially if you write them a ticket, they own that C B, no one's.
And they're got a commercial deal and then they do not like, so sometimes in the past we have, if, if it's the same company. That gets their attention pretty quick because they know we're monitoring it because with the C D, you definitely don't wanna uh get a speed.
The fact that they were ignoring no truck signs, they were, the fact that they were ignoring stop signs, the fact that they were ignoring speed limits signs, they knew what they were doing.
They're, they're coming out of that, the Hunt Rogers, Rock quarry, they're creating a bit out or whatever. And so, um. That's the thing is like, you know, I know it's nothing we can really do about it, but you know, they run up in Viney Grove Road and then. But those, those things are destroying the street. I mean, you can see the street, they're cracked like crazy and they're overweight probably because they're not gonna do skate officer work. You know, and.
And, and by, you know, we're talking about speed bumps and everything, that's, that's one of the issues with speed bumps. People try to at least get one tire to avoid. And that's the end of the road.
I can uh, I can, actually I know a top person at that Rock quarry that I can start to stop. I can reach out to him. My momma.
It's holding too. They're, they're burning their trucks.
That's not, they have nothing else. Tell them, she, she said, we're gonna stop studio.
Well, you know, and that's the police department. We, we typically don't wanna do that because I can tell when we get the complaints. Um, it's kind of funny, but every time we get a complaint, when we post officers there for longer periods, we always, always stop. Typically stop one of the people or two or three of the people that was complaining, so we don't just wanna write everybody tickets, uh, obviously, but um. You know, the big trucks are probably just leaving. I mean, if you hit somebody like he was wanting to do that intersection, um, but they do that all, I mean. Anywhere in the world they start, so you get that every day.
So the best, the best route for them to get to that neighborhood, obviously the legal route would be just down sixty-two.
Industrial Park.
Sixty-two industrial.
Yeah, and then go that way instead of kind of do the cut throughs.
I, I see a lot of them using the new street that cuts through about a middle school.
Yeah.
And, you know, I've not said anything and I don't know if you have any complaints, but a lot of the dump trucks are using that as a cut through. It's not officially a truck route, but we don't have signs posted either, so.
Let's post the signs. Let's just post them because if y'all out there working Bush, if y'all see them.
Well, we've got deliveries to the school though, so are they gonna come up industrial?
Doesn't affect anybody delivering. If they have a destination, like.
Yeah, it's just no through trucks. Yeah.
Yeah.
Chief, how far? What's the moving day?
Oh. I got to win eight months, really eight months. Mid, mid to late June. And honestly, if you look at the progress, I think that's probably pretty accurate. Um, for us in different, because you just have to, you know, you get a big switch, stop the server, you gotta do that pretty quick. When you move in, during. Realistically, we should be all breaking out there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm writing a newsletter trying to take more off of Larry's plate and I, and I posted that when, when you get the newsletter, it's gonna say July first. So I was trying to give him a little.
They say guys are fixing the, I think I saw them today. Having a system.
Is there a street?
Giles is right here.
Okay, oh, this is.
It's Richard.
It is, it is, it is looking good in there. We'll do, we'll do something. That'll give us a reason to add donuts, you mean?
You know, I thought he was kind of exaggerating when he was talking about stopping them speeders out there on the highway, but I had the opportunity to go to court Tuesday. He had four of them that he had over ninety miles an hour.
Yeah, and I, and we, we, and we get on that shit out here.
Were you in the audience?
Oh, were you one of those guys?
I can't say it when you guys like that, I read.
I thought, I think our judge, I think Graham does a good job of trying to hand out.
When you start seeing ninety and a hundred on those.
I mean, isn't that like eight ups?
Well, the problem is you're gonna go to Jeff for nothing anymore. It used to be that way. It used to be reckless and dangerous. You would lose your license for, for thirty to.
I don't know.
All right, long, long range plan and B Greg.
Yes, okay. We had a few things on the agenda. Uh, the first was a rezoning from A one to M U B, actually one, not two.
No, y'all changed it. They came to y'all, would it be two? And the planning commission requested a B one, so they're gonna come back next month with a M U B one.
Um, so we tabled. We didn't deny it. We tabled the M U B two. And then we initiated a rezone from A one to M U B one, both of which will be voted on at the next meeting. This is out, Larry can fill in here too as well, but it's out Butler. Uh.
Butler Road, Heritage Parkway.
Casey's is up at the top corner.
Yeah.
So he's coming down the bottom of the left.
Well, that's, that's Chief's house back there.
Yeah.
You wanna get some neighbors?
So what they're proposing, well, we don't really know, but the M U B one will allow them to have a mixed use, which is what.
They can get a mixture of uh various types of residential multi-family townhouses, that sort of thing with commercial. And the city's land use plan, you can see the land is divided up in two different colors there. Everything in green is already zoned, what they were requesting, which is why they zoned, requested the rest of it. This is what the city has proposed on our master street plan to be a new connection there gradually, which would go through the school property. Uh, so when the city did the new master land use plan, they use that street as kind of the divider. Uh, he wants to go ahead and extend that mixed use into this area up here. The thing with B two is it allows just about any kind of retail use, including big box, uh. You can put a mechanic shop there, you can put an automotive, put gas stations. B one doesn't allow them. It, it allows more things that are more residential friendly, like coffee shops, retail and wider uses. And I think that's what he wanted anyway, but he requested the B two initially because his engineers told him to because every piece was on B two. I wish he talked to this before he requested, but.
So he's actually, it's actually a B one, a new B one?
Well, so he asked for a new B two.
But y'all are.
Well, we were gonna deny it. We decided to table it for the, one other month and then um. Planning commission can initiate a rezoning as well, so we initiated an M U B one that will be voted on next month.
It'll be a new public hearing.
Yes, and that was, so because it was tabled at the previous month meeting, there had already been a public hearing. So there technically did not have to be one at this meeting, which is why we decided not to act on it so that it could then be a public hearing at the next meeting.
And the reason that shape up there doesn't look like this shape is because this triangle is actually part, it's a separate part, but it's part of the. When, when I highlighted that on the county map, so all the.
So will he be required to take the road through then?
Yes, y'all have to build a, it's property. You won't have to take it all the way through, you know? We were hoping the school was gonna build the other half. It looks like that's probably happening, but that was the plan.
Uh, we had a conditional use request from the Quintanas to operate short-term vacation rental at ten ten Hudson Street. We approved. We had.
And, and that is the lot right there, so uh that's where they're gonna have their short-term rent. I like it.
They don't live here?
They just started building the house.
And they're wanting a place to come to visit grandkids essentially and then be able to rent it out when they're not here they live.
Go home to the city here and someone.
Uh, we approved a request for conditional use, allowed mixed use residential and commercial in CBD zone by Jared Bradley. At one twenty-four East Buchanan Street, um, with the condition that it was brought to fire code. So he and Sarah are living in the back of the shop, um, and we were fine with that as long as they brought the residential aspect to fire code. Uh, conditional use request to operate an RV park in an M U B two zone for Fun Shirt Friday LLC on Heritage Parkway. Which we approved and then we uh looked at the request for large scale development approval. For an RV park located on Heritage Parkway for Fun Shirt Friday, which was the same. And that was approved contingent on drainage, um, as well as health department approving the septic system.
And just, just first, context, they're planning on putting in, uh, most of these RV units will have serial connections of if you don't. Uh, which is pretty common in most RV parks, but they're also putting in some yurts, so they will have yurts for rent as well, so.
We have thirty-one.
Body, the land being. They're, yeah, they're more than a tent though and they're a super.
That's the old layout, wasn't it?
Yeah, because it, that's three yurts.
They moved the yurts to the front.
Yes, that's right. He updated right for me and I didn't update my slides.
Thirty-one spots and three yurts is what, unless it's changed someplace.
So anybody that wants to rent a yurt, we're gonna have.
And that was all.
There you go.
Yes. The werewolves, that was still showing back and forth.
And then this is the change in all their septic will be back here. They're actually gonna.
They have two.
I don't think they plan on putting a pump station in because neither septic's gonna be a drip system.
They mentioned the front two, the would be a dog park.
Yes.
By the road?
Thank you, Brian.
Yep. I need you to walk in there.
Yeah, go ahead.
Planning.
Yeah.
I'm bringing this to your attention just for informational purposes. I may stand on it pro or con, but uh. Act five ninety-five was passed by the legislature, which now allows rezonings to be approved administratively in certain cases. So I'm not promoting that I want to do this and I'm not promoting that the next person politically wants to do this. I'm not promoting that y'all want this done. I'm just telling you what the information is. So an administrative rezoning can happen if two things are met. One, the landowner has to be the one that requests it. Nobody else can. And number two, it has to be consistent with the land use plan. So if the land use plan shows that it's residential and he has for residential zoning. It can be approved administratively. So I'm just passing that on to you. That's something the city can adopt. It's not mandatory. But it's your discretion. The only, the only pro to it would be it would definitely expedite.
Cause they're trying to speed up the process.
But on the, on the con side, I think it takes a little bit of.
But this, so they, so they skip planning and then they would just stand in front of. And they would just stand in front of council on rezoning. Just goes to staff. Well, that's something for y'all to think about.
I agree, however, I'm not taking off on Larry, Larry, but I don't think it's a good idea. So I, I think there's checks and balances in place for purpose and when it's all in internally, regardless of who's there, it leads way to.
If, if nothing else, I'll over explain everything, but the good thing about over explaining stuff is that no one feels deceived or left out in the dark. And so speeding up the process can make our citizens feel left out in the dark, so.
Well, and it, to me, it's easy to say things in the office that might not relay well either, or they might not understand it. So when you're in a public setting with video, you're saving yourself.
And, and the other nuances, land use plans are very broad.
Yeah.
So you might have an area residential, they might ask for R one point three, which is very dense. And I, I think it probably needs a planned process to.
Literally, it could be a phone call.
Yeah.
Hey, can you give this?
Get a check.
We're not.
But here's the, here's the beauty of, and look, it's for y'all. Like we, really, we probably getting a little too much into the pros and cons of it. But the truth of it is it takes, for us, it takes the weight off our shoulders where it becomes a one-man show. But really for our, for our citizens, they know it's not a one-man show. They get the right to stand in front of eight people. Not while in rezoning, you're talking about planning commission and then you, you eight people, so um, like I said, it's good checks and balances. But, but y'all have the option there if y'all wanted to change.
I think whoever follows me probably, I mean, it's, that's a lot of weight on your shoulders. So like the rezoning needs to be done administratively, that's, that's a similar process, but. Come around and be forty-eight hours.
I mean, no, it takes. No, no, they're our normal process.
I always tell them to plan on forty-five to sixty minutes.
Yeah, it's just getting them on the planning commission, getting in front of planning commission and then getting them to you guys. If we table some like we've done in this one, you can see it for long, but, but generally speaking, you're looking at it.
That's kind of the minimum, forty-five to sixty days.
We see how, we have, we see how slow development is in, in many cases. See, hey, senior citizens, Paula's not, yeah, she didn't have any updates, just an update on Paula. She did fall and break her shoulder. And so she will have to have surgery from my understanding. So I don't know how fast we'll see her back out here, but y'all reach out to her. Um tell her that y'all miss her and uh and with that, we'll go to library town. No, she knows y'all miss her. Library town.
I go down there so often, they finally start printing me a calendar to tell me what things going on. I think that's darn nice. And you might wanna mark this one, boys and girls. June the nineteenth, they're gonna have summer reading time at one o'clock. And Marty, the balloon man's gonna be there. So. Their blood drive is coming up again in July. Last time they had sixteen pints given. And the friends of the bookstore, the little folks in the back room, they've made about a thousand dollars year to date. And their circulations are about the same as last year through May. And their number of borrowers is about eight hundred and fifty, which is about the same as they had last year. So they're still doing a good job down there. They do have a, I joke about, they do have a lot of good things going down there for the kids in the summertime. They got programs, reading times on Wednesdays. A lot of good things down there.
Um also, speaking of blood drive, I forgot to mention June fifth is the police booth basis and they added bandages this year. I've seen on fire.
Is it at the school?
Uh yes, at the high school again, June fifth.
June fifth, that's a perfect time because way onto announcement.
Community bloods here in those arcs, you know, always they don't, I started starting, we've always done with them. Yeah, there's the blood, you'll watch the region like this around here, you know, I mean, if you don't eat blood, say somebody's like, we got forty-five degrees. I think it's good to know that if you don't eat film at this phase within this general region. I think it starts. Yeah, I believe around eleven, it'll run, usually run by five. I've got flyer at the P D, the gentleman brought off. I'll probably start putting them around tomorrow at one stop place and I'll send out an email on the vet times on, so.
June sixth and seventh is Jump Fest. How many, how many vendors have we up to now?
We got change a lot full, um Mark, we got about, we did give another twelve eighteen vendors.
And I think I sent out the food vendor list today and I think there's six.
We did have two new vendors at a pod today about.
How many total? We, we love.
We're, we're like sixty.
I told you it's getting close to seventy.
That's a lot.
Yeah, it is.
Now, a lot of women are like twenty here, twenty that, uh hey, so.
We'll see if it works out. June sixth and seventh, June sixth and seventh.
And June seventh. You can go down to Sonic Lodge and get breakfast.
Oh, start the day off right. There you go. So June sixth and seventh, Jump Fest, June seventh. Hey man, you get all, you get all that run over from Jump Fest. Y'all, y'all may make enough money for the whole year. No.
The storm last night. They gave it to me Monday and I was like, I'm not having it today.
We have it because it's sitting in my office. Um second Saturdays, is it street? I thought so. I didn't wanna say it until I knew. June fourteenth is street dance downtown. And Legion Breakfast. So you got Sonic Lodge, the seventh and the fourteenth, you got second Saturdays. And then you follow that up with um a little walk downtown and the street dance in the evening. Anything else? You have a little knowledge? No, I don't have any. Lions Club will be at the street dance. Hey, what is the times on the street dance? Seven to ten.
They're gonna have both kinds of music.
With both kinds of music.
Country and western.
For what?
It's on you now, my friend.
And food vendors or, are, are the rowhouse, are they bringing tamales over there again?
I don't know.
Sorry, Lions Club, they're way better.
Well, you just gotta buy a burger, put the tamales on top of that burger.
Whatever they make. I don't.
After taking two days, Mr. Mayor, finally got three days. I make a move, we adjourn.
All in favor? Y'all have a good day.